Welcome to the regularly scheduled City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 20th, 2018. This meeting is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as customary for the invocation done by Mayor Pro Tem Matt Albrecht.
(inaudible)
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for our emergency responders. We thank you for the sacrifices they make. We thank you for the sacrifices their families and their friends make, and we ask for your hand of protection on them as they serve our community. We pray this evening for your patience, for your grace, for your wisdom, as we make decisions that our community may flourish, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley.
Here.
Councilmember Aris.
Here.
Councilmember Milan.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Here.
We do have a quorum tonight.
The first item on the agenda is the consideration of approving the following consent agenda. The consent agenda this week contains the minutes of the regularly scheduled City Council meeting that was held on Wednesday, November 7th, and the accepting of the resignation of Christina Jabori from the Parks and Recreation Board.
May I move the consent agenda be approved as listed?
Support.
Were there any questions or discussions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aris.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes. The A's have it, and the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the introduction of our new Claussen Historical Director, and I believe Renee Healy is here with us tonight. She worked with Melody, our previous curator, in 2015, so welcome, and tell a little bit about yourself.
Hi there. So, it's a pleasure to be working back with the museum. Like I mentioned, I did work with her a little bit ago, so I look forward to carrying on the legacy of Melody and Dolores as well. So, it'll be a pleasure working with the community and stop in and see us on Wednesdays and Sundays. Thanks.
So, you're the director, and the curator is Taylor Gibson.
Yeah, and she works over at the library.
She's been with the library, and she's unable to be here this evening.
Exactly. Yeah, no, she is working on her degree in library science, so it'll be great to have her kind of take ownership of the collection and some of the archival material that we have.
Well, thank you, and welcome on board.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an introduction and swearing-in of Lieutenant Scott Servallo as the new Claussen Police Chief. Before we complete that, I'd like to recognize some of the important dignitaries that we have here in the room to celebrate with us. 52nd, 4th District Judge Kristen Nielsen-Hardig. If she could please stand, raise her hand. District Judge Maureen McGuinness. District Court Magistrate Clem Waldman, over there in the back. District Court Magistrate Don Chisholm. District Court Magistrate Sheldon Larky. Claussen Prosecutor Eric Getz and Renus Nushai. 52nd, 4th District Court Employees. Retired Troy Police Chief Charlie Kraft. Is Mr. Kraft here? Claussen Police Department Officers and Families, and we'd like to also recognize Mr. Servallo's father, retired Marquette Police Chief Salvatore Servallo.
Scott Allen Servallo graduated from Northern Michigan University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He then went on to and graduated from the Oakland Police Academy in November of 1991. He started his career working for the, if I can pronounce that, how do you pronounce that?
Nagani.
Nagani Police Department in 1991, and in 1993, he was hired by the Claussen Police Department where he has set his roots with his family that is present here today. He has risen through the ranks here at Claussen, starting as a patrol officer, moving on to sergeant, and currently as a detective lieutenant. He has been a lieutenant for the past 16 years and has numerous years of investigative experience and certificates of accomplishments to show for his time with Claussen. He's deeply rooted in this community and has made himself known throughout the city. He has built long-lasting relationships with other police departments, residents, business owners, staff, and his fellow police officers. He will be welcomed leader to the position of police chief, and through the interview process, his knowledge, skills, and abilities shown through. We are in good hands with Scott as the new police chief, and we also want to thank Chief Harry Anderson for his many years of dedicated service to the department and to the city. We also want to thank Sergeant Kelly Bous and Sergeant David Scott for their amazing interviews and ideas that were brought forth. We know that you, as a department, will all work together to make the official transition be seamless as possible, starting January 1st, 2019. So, at this time, I will administer the oath officially to you. Step up there. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, the Charter of the City of Claussen, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of police chief, in and for the City of Claussen, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. This time, we'll have Lisa come up and do the official pen.
Only happens once in a lifetime. Take your time.
(laughing).
of our Claussen Police Department and the support you've shown me tonight to move me to my next step in my career as your police chief. A big thank you to my wife Lisa, my kids Cody Garrett, Alexis, and Brooke, my mom and dad, my mother-in-law, and all my friends and family that have shown up here tonight to support this process. I look forward to the next chapter in my life to lead the Claussen Police Department. I will continue to focus on the safety and welfare of the citizens of this city, the City of Claussen, and I know I can easily meet this goal with the qualified men and women who work hard every day as your police officers. This department is not a one-person show, but yet a team of dedicated people to get this job down and to meet these goals. We will continue our focus on community policing and move forward with that. This is a very exciting time for the Claussen Police Department. We're going to have a new chief, a new sergeant, new officers assigned to investigations, and eventually, a new police officer with the replacement of Chief Harry Anderson, someone who will work hard and keep this city where people want to live in and raise families in. Again, I thank you for your support and look forward to leading the police department. Thank you.
John Covo, do you take a picture with your family?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think Victoria's here, too.
the new sergeant.
Madam Mayor.
Step up.
I guess I'm at two different microphones here. Since June, when I announced my retirement, the department's working hard for the transition to have it, make it as smooth as possible for us to just carry on and do the great job that the men and women of the department do on a day-to-day basis. This is Officer Scott Vierk, who many of you have seen several times because he's been up here with his accolades through the years. You think of adjectives for Scott Vierk, and you hear "hardworking," "self-starting," "ambitious," and "a professional." And he leads, since he's been employed with our department since 2012, he came to our department with 10 years of experience with law, in law enforcement, so he has plenty of experience to be the next sergeant in the police department. Scott Vierk has been a field training officer. He's a member of our crash investigation team for Socket. He's one of our DRE officers, our drug recognition officers. He's won the MADD award every year since 2014. He's had three departmental commendations. Three years, he was Officer of the Year, and he also received an award from another agency which is our way of recognizing him for his MADD award for the recognition of excellence award and the salute award for going above and beyond in the enforcement of drunk driving. Scott took the sergeant's test with, we had many officers in our department that took it. The cream rose to the top. Scott did a great job in going through the testing process, which it consisted of a written exam and an assessment center, and I'm telling you, Scott worked his rear end off studying for that test, and it showed with the results. Officer Vierk will lead by example, and I'm sure that others will follow him and follow his lead as he continues to work hard, which I'm sure he's going to do even as a sergeant, and which is an excellent way for the young officers that are going to start to follow his lead. So, it's my pleasure to introduce him as our next sergeant.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, the Charter of the City of Claussen, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of sergeant, in and for the City of Claussen, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability, so help you God?
Yes, sir, I will. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Just like to say thank you. It's a great honor to attain my dream. This has been my dream to become a sergeant with this department. I'm very excited for this next role. Thank you all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the introduction of Sergeant Kelly Bous as the new supervisor in the Detective Bureau.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council. Sergeant Bous has been with our department since 2005. She has 13 and a half years with us. She has six years as a supervisor. She's been an evidence tech with our police department, school liaison. She worked in the Detective Bureau for a few months. I get it wrong. I always say two. She corrects me, and I think it's...
It's two.
Oh, I was right this time. Then she got promoted to sergeant, so she had to leave the Detective Bureau early. It's not that she wasn't doing the work or couldn't do the work, it's because she got promoted, and good for her on that point. Now, with the total transition of the police department, they have to replace my role in investigations. Sergeant Bous submitted a very thorough letter on her reasons, why she would want to be in investigation. She's gone through some training. She's set herself up for the position well. Other officers put in for it before. This time, they did not, and I'm just glad that we're moving on, filling the spot. Sergeant Bous will do a great job filling that role. She has a great desire to work in investigation. It's always been her dream. It's one step in our department that not a lot, not a lot of officers can get to, so I congratulate Sergeant Bous for this move into investigations.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to take a second just to thank everybody for having me here tonight and letting me fulfill my dream. This is actually my career goal for my entire life, was to fulfill this position, so it is definitely much appreciated, and I'm really excited for everything that's going to come in the future. So, thank you.
Congratulations. The next item on the agenda is the introduction of Officer Ian Calamita as the new detective.
Madam Mayor, Council, Ian Calamita interviewed for the position of a patrol detective. That position is a three-year rotation in our department. Detective Mills took that position for three years. No officers had put in for it, so he put in and got another three years. So, come June of 2019, his six-year role in the Detective Bureau will be up. Officer Calamita has been with us for about nine and a half years. He mostly works the afternoon shift. He fills in as officer in charge when there's no supervisor on several times. He showed a desire for investigations. He interviewed well with the four-person panel that we had interviewing the officers that wanted that position. Officer Calamita is at that point in his career where with his daughter, he can move to a day shift position, and with the interview, he made the process, and I look forward to him moving into investigations in June, and I look forward to him and Sergeant Bous fulfilling those investigative seats. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Not one for speeches, so I'm going to keep this short. I just want to say thank you. Looking forward to a new challenge in accepting this role as a detective for the police department of the City of Claussen, and I'm looking forward to spending many more years here, and hopefully, myself and Sergeant Bous can move forward and do a good job replacing the detectives that we have in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind at this time, I think that's all the police introductions. So, family and friends, if you would like to come over to the Community Center with us, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'll see you all. I'm going over there.
You better save some cake, though.
Move into the hallway.
Could we move into a recess for a couple minutes?
You should.
Can I make a motion for that?
Yeah, you make the motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we take a five-minute recess to allow the room to clear.
Support.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
It would really be terrible if you all came back with a piece of cake.
Piece of cake. All right. That cake is looking pretty small.
I know. I was thinking the same thing.
So, that cake is pretty small compared to how many people are here. Is that what it is?
They take recesses for our council meetings all the time.
I know. But they also are like three-hour, four-hour long meetings.
Oh, yeah. I can see some of our friends now.
Sorry. It's not as bad as the special one. You have to go through all of them, which hopefully 6:30 will work for you that night.
This meeting is called back to order.
Do we need a motion?
No. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving a lease agreement by and between the Claussen School District and the City of Claussen. Mr. Kingsepp, would you please share some of the information, and we will debate and discuss it after the motion.
We initially have had this lease for some time. The anomaly is that the City of Claussen owns the park, but all the athletic activities occur on that, so for a period of time, we've had a lease, which goes for a considerable period of time, with payments being made. So, the city, earlier this year, requested a renewal of the lease to some extent and a revision of some of it, and more of the area that was discussed dealt with the school fields itself and the maintenance of the school fields, the responsibility for it, reimbursement to the city for it, because the city will do those responsibilities in the fields, and then, on exceptional days, they have to be compensated for it. If it's on a holiday or on a weekend, they have to recompensate the city for that expense. We put in here turf replacement. This kind of turf is expensive. It does last for a certain period of time, and we didn't define a general time on when that has to be replaced. It's basically how the condition of the field will be as an inherent danger to the players, it's primarily the football field, that a need will be to replace it. Presumably, the monies we get on the use of the field are being put into a separate account for the payment of any replacement down the road. The fields last for about 16 to 19 years, sometimes maybe less than that, but that provision is in this lease on responsibility for repayment and determination when that's going to occur. The lease goes for 50 years, and it has various terms where the rent increases, but one need, when you have a lease that long and you have disputes under it, and you're generally going to have disputes under something like this, because circumstances change generally that require that. So, we have a dispute resolution clause which avoids litigation, and it goes through a process with a recognized organization of mediators who've had 25 years or more experience, who assist the parties in mediating. If you cannot settle the issue, it goes to arbitration. That's binding, no litigation. So, we try to keep the cost down. We try to keep the expense down that are not directly related to the field itself, but are related particularly to the resolution of issues. And when you're getting a lease this long, it's inevitable, you're going to have something. Generally, they resolve after mediation, but you have the arbitration clause as well. So, it goes on for another several terms of about anywhere from five- to seven-year terms, and it just rolls over with the rent increasing. So, hopefully, we had a good experience the first couple of terms, and hopefully, we'll have that in the continuing future.
Mr. Kingsepp, in the past, what were the lease, how long were the lease agreements with the school system between the city?
Oh, I don't have the past lease.
I was just curious.
They're anywhere from five to seven years.
Madam Mayor, I move the lease agreement by and between the Claussen School District and the City of Claussen be approved.
Support. Any additional questions or comments?
Can you rephrase that? I realize it says the First Amendment to the lease agreement.
Yeah, it's the First Amendment to the lease agreement.
So, can you?
Madam Mayor, I move the First Amendment to the lease agreement to bind between the Claussen School District and the City of Claussen be approved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the approval of the Claussen Goodfellows' paper sale. That's Friday, November 30th, and Saturday, December 1st. The members of the fire department will be selling their paper, which features community news and Goodfellow updates for a monetary donation of your choice. 100% of all the proceeds will go to a help of Claussen family. If you'd like to send in a tax-deductible donation, you can also send that, a check or money order, to the Claussen Goodfellows, PO Box 239, Claussen, Michigan, 48017. For more information, you can call 248-407-5522, or email claussengoodfellows@gmail.com. Or somebody from the department, were you here and you wanted to speak? Or somebody from the department, were you here and you wanted to speak of your exciting paper drive?
Don't hit us in the street.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move the request by the Clausen Goodfellows to conduct their annual paper sale on Friday, November 30th, 2018, and Saturday, December 1st, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. throughout most of the major intersections of the City of Clausen be approved.
Support.
Any additional questions or discussions in regard to the paper sale? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of establishing a public hearing to solicit comments on the possible recommendations of a preliminary denial or preapproval of the following Class C licensed businesses. Black Lotus, 1 East 14 Mile Road. Clausen 4188 Building Association, Inc., or Knights of Columbus, 870 North Main Street. Clausen Aerie Fraternal Orders of Eagles, 174 Bowers. Clausen Grill, 41 South Main. Clausen Steakhouse, 56 South Rochester Road. Clausen Woodpile Barbecue Shack, 303 South Main Street. Denang, 1 South Main Street. Duvente, 220 South Main Street. Hideout, 110 West 14 Mile Road. Mojave Cantina and Grill, 48 West 14 Mile Road. Montage Grill, 28 South Main Street. Moose Wiznuski's, 38 South Main Street. Old Burger Bar, 27 East 14 Mile Road. Osaka Japanese Steakhouse, 1119 West Maple Road. Renshaw Lounge, 210 East 14 Mile Road. Tavern on the Main, 235 South Main Street. Three Cats Cafe, 116 West 14 Mile Road. Zoli's Restaurant, 110 East 14 Mile Road.
Your Honor, I move a public hearing on the possible recommendations of a preliminary denial or preapproval of the aforementioned Class C licensed businesses be held prior to the regular city council meeting on Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Support.
I just want to mention that this typically allows the specific appropriate inspections and reports to be presented to the city council, health department, licensing board, and the like. Were there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda, I would like to read a public statement that was agreed upon by Mr. Pollak and the city council. The city council has accepted Mr. Pollak's request to enter into a separation agreement, thereby ending his employment contract as city manager. Having reached agreement on the terms of that agreement, each party wishes the other the best in the future. In light of that public statement, the next item on the agenda is consideration of approving the separation agreement by and between Mr. Mark Pollak and the City of Clausen. Mr. Kingsup is here to answer any questions.
All I can say is the agreement came about very quickly, and Mr. Pollak asked me to prepare it, I prepared it. He eventually then had me hand it over after I sent him to his attorney. We had negotiations over a 24-hour period, and it ended up with a resolution signed a day by him.
Madam Mayor, I move the separation agreement bind between Mark Pollak and the City of Clausen be approved.
Support.
Were there any additional comments or questions at this time? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
No.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. The next item on the agenda was consideration of the list of bills as presented.
Madam Mayor, pay the bills.
Any questions on the bills? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the city attorney's report.
None, Madam Mayor.
In the interim, Chief Harry Anderson is acting as our city manager. Did you have any?
I have no report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And now Mr. Smith, our city clerk. Do you have a report?
Hi, Madam Mayor and council, I do have the following few items to report. I just wanted to tell everyone that the, all Clausen election results are official. We have been officially canvassed, and all the things were adjudicated at the Board of Canvassers, so we are set. I want to thank you to my deputy, Victoria, for all of her help during the election and beyond, especially last week and beyond that. And now that they are official, we will send the information to MuniCode to update our charter for the two charter amendments that did pass, and then that will be updated and codified. In regards to Renshaw Apartments, we have two management opportunities that have been proposed or submitted to us. We also have two vacancies that we are trying to fill. We have notices that were submitted to those on the list. We gave them until Wednesday of this week to notify us. So far, we have one yes, I believe, so for sure, one apartment will be filled. The other one, I think there's a tentative yes, so they might be both filled. And then we would like to, of course, figure out a day in December to go to Renshaw and meet with John and myself, and meet with residents, and kind of discuss things as well as the management plan to then present back to you at a future date. And to meet with the residents to figure out some of the issues they might have, some things that are going on with Renshaw Apartments, to develop a better plan of action. Also, we do have, just was brought up by the Lions Club, I think the building department will end up speaking to you about this, but I believe we need a new frigid city hall in the back room. So that will be coming forth, just causing issues with rentals possibly, so just FYI with that, I believe that will be coming forward. We also have to figure out how we want to handle, I believe we received notice numerous times about, that I have received as well from the MML in regards to the pavement warranty program. We do have to establish kind of that on the horizon, just to kind of put that out there. It's not till next year of September, but a lot of municipalities are developing plans of actions on how to handle that pavement warranty program. So that is all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I actually had one question. There's the nationwide FOIA requests submitted by that group, and we were caught up in that. Are there any updates on that?
Sorry, I have not received payment. So there are many, many clerks throughout the state. Some have, some have not. Some have already finalized the FOIA for the 2016 election. Some are waiting for the money. So at this point, we're kind of waiting for guidance from the new Secretary of State, I believe, to see, I guess, what the opinion will be. If we don't receive payment, does that just mean that the FOIA is done? And then we can move forward with shredding the ballots, because it's outside of that window, the retention time? Or do we have to still hold on to them and allow them more time? So there's a lot of, a lot of questions going around between all the clerks, because some have gotten it, some have not. I have not received anything, so we're not moving forward until we get any money, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I wanted to say that last Thursday afternoon, I reached out to GovHRUSA. It's an organization that offer interim government staffing, as well as a full-service executive recruitment search service. The individual that had been assisting the City of Troy with their city manager search was assigned to assist Clausen with our immediate city manager staffing need. I was told it will take about five business days to get resumes of available individuals to the city. Realizing the importance of getting an interim individual in place, I requested that they provide candidate resumes as soon as possible. Once those resumes have been received, an open session meeting of council will be scheduled and posted. Because of the necessity of a quick resolution, the notice may be posted in a rather quick timeframe, but will, as always, be posted within the legal timeframe dictated by the charter. I also wanted to mention that we have board appointment openings and several of our boards. Those individuals that are currently serving that would like to continue to serve, please send me an email so that we can process that paperwork. Currently, are going to be opening soon for the Board of Reviews, City Planning Commission, Downtown Development Authority, the Historical Commission, Parks and Recreation, based on the early resignation we read in the consent agenda, and I believe the Zoning Board of Appeals as well. You can get those applications either online or here at City Hall from the Clerk's office. The next item on the agenda was new business, unless anyone else had any unfinished business they wanted to add. New business, this Saturday, the 24th, is Shop Small Saturday. Please start thinking about and buying gifts for our loved ones, and strongly encourage you to shop small on Saturday, November 24th. You can check out a video that's available online for information on how you, as a shopper, can be entered to win a contest. Business owners can also get in on the action by registering by tomorrow, November 21st, and you'll also be able to, eligible to win $1,000. I believe that link is available on the DDA's website, as well as the city's website. So just shop small and shop often. The next item on the item that's coming up is the annual tree lighting. That's Wednesday, November 28th, at 6:30 at Memorial Park, also known as the gazebo. If you'd like to drop in to the library ahead of time, you can make an ornament for the tree at the library beforehand, and there is no registration requirement for that. I want a reminder that the library will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. They'll be closed November 22nd through the 25th. Any other items to add? Okay. With that, we roll on to public discussion. The public, the floor is now open. Please state your name and address, and we're going to try to get to as many people as we can.
Kathy Phillips, 226 Hendrickson. I was going to go last, just to see if anybody missed anything, but I changed my mind. I've likened this to when the council, maybe fifteen years ago, tried to bring the Sheriff's Department in. That was the last time we had this many people probably in this council chambers. That's what made me run for council, because I was so adamant against that. I was on council for eight years. I worked with Mark for fifteen of those prior to that, and since then, I've been talking to him a lot. I just want you to think about a couple of things, and I know it's too late, I know there's a separation agreement, but I want you to think about these things. I don't want any answers right now at all. Mark did financial planning, and he did the city manager job. We don't need just a city manager. Now we need a financial director. So that's two salaries now. It's appalling to me that this would have even gone on, that he would have gotten driven out. And again, I'm not asking for comments, this is the perception of everybody around. I've seen it coming for a while. So rather than sitting here and judging, I think every concerned citizen in this city should go back and review all of the council meetings and workshops that the council has conducted in their first year. The council has an unprecedented amount of closed sessions. They preach transparency and are not transparent. They preach accountability and are not accountable. From closed ballot vote for Mayor Pro Tem to the loss of our city manager, from direction to enforce the chicken ordinance to chastising the code enforcement for enforcing the same ordinance, from removing the planning consultant without input from him or the people that worked with him, this council has chosen to allow their charter, given authority, to repeatedly ignore advice from their experts who represent the City of Clausen, either on a board or as employees. More than one good person has been lost under this council, and I hope people in the audience and people that are watching keep this in mind when it's the next time to a vote.
Hello, I'm Tim Wilson, 738 Driant Drive. I'm here for a different reason. I'm here to thank the police department for the work that they have been doing with Clausen Public Schools. I'm also the superintendent of the school district, and we have instituted a new training procedure for safety reasons, and the police department has been very involved in that, and they've done an excellent job. I have been meeting with every staff member and having one-on-one conversations with them, and one of the topics that often comes up is safety, and they are just thrilled with the new program that has been put in place and the work that the police have done to make this happen in cooperation with us. So I just wanted to say thank you to the police department for their great work in cooperation with us. Every building now, all the staffs have been trained, except for Baker Building, and that training will be going on tomorrow. And we have had practices as well in every building, and things have gone very well, and our staff feels much safer because of the work of the police department. So thank you to the police department, men and women who have been working with us, and we greatly appreciate it. I also wanted to give you an update where we are with the lease agreement. We were waiting for you to approve that tonight, and then our school board has a workshop in December, and they'll be looking at the lease, and then we'll be voting on it in December. My business manager has been keeping me abreast of that, and I've been in favor of the things that are in that lease, and I'll be making a recommendation to our board to support that, but they will be discussing that, and then they will vote in December. So we're hoping that all things go well, but I just want to let you know that we still need to approve that lease. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Scannell. I'm a co-owner of Leon and Lulu, and I just wanted to state that I thought that Mark Pollak was a value-added for the city. Every time we've had to deal with him, he's been professional, and so I'm disappointed in the way this is happening, and I'm wondering why people who are virtually just residents are deciding that they can run the city.
I don't think that we feel that we're running the city.
Well, you run out the guy who was running the city, and I don't know why. Is it a personality conflict? That's not a reason.
The separation agreement binds us for?
I understand.
No further comment. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Annie Fenton, 221 Huntley Avenue. I've been on the Planning Commission since 2014, so I've been also an appointee of the city, but I'm here tonight as a resident. And my question relates to the overall cost implication of rehiring for Mark's position, which would include, obviously you can't disclose, but which would include, I'm assuming there's a financial component to the separation agreement, the search firm, rehiring for the city manager, replacing the financial director position, and any other costs, including legal costs, and how you're going to deal with that in the budget, and as well, how you're going to incorporate staff as well as resident input in the hiring of those positions. Thank you.
Did you mean to answer now?
Pardon me?
Are you going to comment, answer?
I'm sorry, that's why I talked about that, there'll be an open session to be able to discuss all that interim city manager and that additional items in another open session. I'm not prepared to discuss that, because we are waiting on information from this organization, because they have not provided that information yet.
Sorry. So are you going to make decisions before that consultation or after that consultation?
We're going to be discussing it openly whenever, once we get the resumes, we're going to be discussing it at that time.
But you're already in an agreement with the search firm?
No, we are not. We are in no agreement. They're going to provide resumes, and then we can decide if we would like to move forward with them. There's been no contract, no agreement whatsoever, they're just going to provide resumes that we can discuss and see if that's something we would want to move forward with their organization. In addition, Michigan Municipal, Michigan- In addition, Michigan Municipal League also has individuals listed on their website that we could contact directly without entering into any contract with Michigan Municipal League at all.
Okay.
So there's some other options, and there's been no contract signed, it's just that I needed to get information, so no contract, no agreement, no cost has been agreed to at all, and no decisions have been made, just information.
So you'll be prepared to come to that open meeting with cost implications and budget implications?
I'm hoping so. I'm waiting for them to give me resumes. We wouldn't be making any sort of decision there without the rest, you know, the whole story as far as cost implications, but that will all be discussed at that open session.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Liz Curtin from Leon and Lulu and Three Cats Cafe. I'm very concerned about the transition that we're going to be experiencing here because we don't have a leader to aid whoever succeeds Mark, who totally understands the finances of our city, who understands the management of our city. We have nobody to guide our next two people who will be required to replace the one who has been so summarily lost. And I'm only stating that this is going to be a major issue, and it's something I think all residents should be watching carefully, hoping that we can have an orderly transition and that we can have anything close to the high level of professionalism, dedication, and loyalty at a great price that we had from Mark. I think we've made a horrible mistake for Clausen fiscally. We have done it a moral thing, and I'm shocked at what this council has done.
Anyone else? If there's no one else, public session, public discussion will now be closed.
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn the meeting.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Reverend Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.